Good evening, everyone. This is Nancy Macklin here tonight. Thank you for joining us for the first HLAA Town Hall meeting. First, I would like to say thank you to Cindy Thompson from Alternative Communication Services for providing captioning this evening. If you don't already have captioning on your screen, the little CC button is above audio screen, or you can hit Ctrl+F8 on your keyboard for captioning. This webinar is being recorded, so we can post the recording on our website. So we'll go ahead and get started. I want to introduce our speakers tonight from HLAA, are well-known to most of you. Our Board Chair, Meg Wallhagen, is a professor of Gerontological Nursing and a geriatric nurse practitioner in the School of Nursing at the University of California in San Francisco, and she's serving currently her second term as our Board Chair. Anna Gilmore-Hall comes to us from Practice Green Health, where she was the Executive Director, and I can't believe that she started as Executive Director in July of 2013. Time flies. So I know we have a lot to talk about this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and turn the microphone over to Anna, and she can get started. She's going to, just to set the stage, she's going to talk about several items that you can see on the PowerPoint. If you have questions at any time, you can post them in the chat box. If the question is appropriate to the topic at that moment, we'll go ahead and take the questions. Otherwise, there will be time for questions at the end as well. So just go ahead and type your questions in the chat box if you have them, and I'll kind of monitor that as we go along. Okay, I know we have a lot to talk about, so Anna, you can go ahead and get started. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nancy, and thanks to everyone for being on the webinar tonight. It is that time of year when we're all dealing with a lot of political issues, elections, Republicans and Democrats are running for office, and we get to see them on television a lot. But the one thing that they're doing many times across the country is a series of Town Hall meetings to really kind of understand what's going on with the public and to use these opportunities as a way to listen to their constituents. HLAA has wanted to do this for some time, and we really haven't had the opportunity to make that happen until tonight. So we'd like to do this a couple of times a year, and we'll see what your reaction is to the Town Hall meeting that we're having tonight, where this is going to be an open dialogue. It's really an opportunity for us to give you a little bit of information.
I've lost the connection. I can't quite hear anybody anymore, so I'm not sure if someone else is talking. I apologize.
Meg, that seems to have happened to me as well, and I'm reconnecting. I don't know if that's happening to other people as well. Anna, are you able to hear me?
I can hear you, Nancy.
Okay, all right. Looks like we just had a little hiccup in our system.
But the video, oh, there it is. Now the video's back. I lost that for a while. Meg, can you hear?
I can't hear, but I can read the captioning, and I'll be trying to read the captioning and keeping up with everyone.
Okay. So Meg, I think we're turning it over to you to talk about the Board of Trustees' update.
Well, good evening, and first of all, welcome to everyone who's online. I'm sitting in a hotel room in Orlando at a meeting, so I noticed that on picture, at least to me, I look a little bit yellow, so maybe that just means it's been a long meeting. However, I'm very excited to share with you some of the challenges and opportunities that the Board is dealing with and the situation, it might be, say, setting the scene that the Board is dealing with in our environment. We have a Dynamic Board, and we have a new strategic intent, so I just want to go into each of those just very, very briefly. First, and I guess that's the next slide, I'd like to talk a little bit about the challenges and opportunities that we're facing for all of us in the hearing healthcare field. And I think it's extremely exciting to know that we really have now going on a great deal of attention being paid to hearing loss nationally. One of the first things that has happened fairly recently is that the Institute of Medicine Committee on Accessibility and Affordability on Hearing Healthcare was established. Now, some of you may know that the Institute of Medicine is an extremely important group that sets recommendations that are really attended to nationally by policymakers and politicians and others. They're the group that actually sent out safety parameters for hospitals when they showed that there were gaps in the quality of care and really made major changes in the healthcare environment. They set out what we call the "Future of Nursing" that looked at changes that needed to be done. So it's extremely valuable to have the Institute of Medicine take on this issue of accessibility and affordability with hearing healthcare. And HLAA is, of course, very pleased and excited to be part of that in the sense that we've helped sponsor this, and therefore, we are talking to them in an ongoing basis, and we've been able to present to them about the things that we feel consumers really need to know and for possible recommendations. They do only come out with recommendations, but we can be very actively involved in implementing those. And the other major change is that the President's Committee on Advisors on Science and Technology, specifically focused on technology related to hearing, and most recently came out with a report that strongly supported accessible and affordable hearing technology, including various ways of actually getting hearing aids, especially for persons who have relatively mild and moderate hearing loss. The other thing I just wanted to highlight along with this is that these are recommendations they recommend to the President, who then takes these recommendations and implements them, or maybe makes recommendations to those individuals or those groups that actually can carry out the recommendations. But the one thing we always have to keep in mind, and it's something that we're very aware of and that we continue to work on, is that right now, the coverage for hearing aids, it's not covered by Medicare, as most of you know, and most insurance companies. But we've been working very diligently to try and have that changed, but that takes legislation. It means working with congressional representatives. It means arguing for why it's important at this time when many people are very concerned about finances. So we'll continue to work on that policy level to see if we can assure that Medicare changes also occur and we get coverage. We're really pushing for, and recently came out with a position paper, on coverage by Medicare for much more than just hearing aids, but all of oral rehabilitation and all of hearing healthcare. So we'll continue to work on that. The next thing, if we move to what the Dynamic Board, in terms of the next slide, I just want to highlight the fact that our Board is very, very dynamic. It's always been, really. We've had, I think, across the years, HLAA has been represented by a wonderful group of individuals who are very committed to the mission on the Board. But as we move into this new environment, we are now having even more new members with a wide range of experience to potentially deal with some of these very new occurrences in the hearing healthcare environment. And the Board has been working very specifically to develop specific position papers that really put into writing ways in which we feel that the consumer needs to be cared about in thinking about policies going forward. And by making these position statements, we can use them to take to policymakers, and they really specifically stress what our vision is, what our beliefs are. And one of those is access to the full spectrum of adaptive hearing technology. One talks specifically about Medicare coverage for hearing aids and oral rehab, and one looks at something that's a passion for me, is screening for health hearing loss in primary care, because we know that doesn't occur. And I'm personally trying to work on that specifically in terms of protocols. So we've really looked at different kinds of position statements. We have other groups that are very interested in some of these, and they sign on, which gives them more power, and so it's good to put our beliefs into position statements. And we're now working on one related to personal sound amplifying systems, and also one that really emphasizes the need for consumer-focused care rather than just technology. And then the final thing, to just go to the next slide, is just saying that what we also looked at is, in this new environment, we thought our strategic intent document was dated. It wasn't giving us the guidance for the future. So we now have a new strategic intent document that just was finalized and approved by the Board, and the focus of this strategic intent document is on the consumer and what should be, really, the environment in which persons who have difficulty hearing live in. And the focus there is on the fact that HLAA seeks to enable people with hearing loss to live fully and without compromise. And the specific areas that we've addressed and the things that we think should be there would be that stigma is eliminated, that costs decrease, that public spaces are more accessible, that hearing loss is specifically addressed, and that means maybe the consumer is willing to take that on and not wait as long before taking care of the hearing problems they might have, so that they use the technology that's available. That consumers have know-how, they know the questions, they know how to evaluate different things, that technology works seamlessly, that hearing loss is understood as the public health issue it is, that we actually implement prevention of hearing loss as a routine process, and that providers follow best practices, which is another critical element for those of you who know how essential those providers are to maximize your hearing capacity. And I think with that, I will pass it back to Anna to share more about what HLAA is doing.
Thanks, Meg. We're following, doing well at passing the baton back and forth. I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about a couple of the advocacy efforts that are going on here at HLAA, and because we really do want to use this webinar as an opportunity to listen, I'm not really going to talk very much. And there's only a couple of things that I want to say, and then we're going to open it up to questions and comments from everyone on the call. So there's many things we could talk about when it comes to giving you an update on advocacy, but I thought I would focus only on two things that happened this week and gives you a sense of some of the things that we're doing here at HLAA. So HLAA, in collaboration with the wireless industry and other consumer groups, submitted a consensus letter to the FCC outlining a plan to make all wireless phones hearing aid compatible, and that will occur within the next eight years. This proposal means greater choice in wireless phone selection for those with hearing aids or cochlear implants. And specifically, it requires that 66% of wireless phones be hearing aid compatible within the next two years, 85% within five years, and 100% within eight years. Now, we've been working on this for a long time, and we've been leading the effort. And tomorrow, we will find out from the FCC, when we attend a meeting at the FCC, how they responded to this agreement and what they're thinking about in terms of moving forward with our recommendations. This is very exciting, because we've been working on hearing aid-compatible phones for a long time, and we've never had this kind of system in place that would really require this kind of adherence with the phone companies and hearing aid companies. So we're very excited that after all these years, we've been able to accomplish this, and after tomorrow, when we meet with the FCC one more time, we'll be able to tell you a little bit more about the success of this effort. But we're pretty confident that this is going to move forward. So that's something that started last week and will hopefully give us some good conclusion tomorrow. The other important thing that we've been working on last week and this week is additional work around captioning and television. As many of you know, we have an ongoing challenge with quality captioning, both with live television shows and even sometimes with movies. And for those television shows and newscasts that are in smaller broadcast markets, they don't necessarily have to use live captioning. They can use a system called electronic newsroom techniques, which basically allow them to caption the scripts that are put on teleprompters during television shows. And it's particularly a challenge for people when we're looking at live news, sports, any time alerts that come on that aren't something that could be scripted ahead of time. And we've had some real challenges with the quality of that. And so last week, we again filed comments with the FCC to really reinforce for them the fact that the current system is not working and that we need to see those smaller markets move to live captioning for their television shows. So again, this is something we've been working on for some time. We are seeing some progress from the responsiveness of the FCC and even frankly, from the industry, and we believe that we're making some real progress here. So we're very excited to be able to report that we're seeing progress, and we're going to continue pushing this effort moving forward. So those are two things that we're working on from an advocacy point of view this week. The other thing that I wanted to give people a quick update on is the Unified Membership Model. We started this about a year ago with two chapters, one in New York and one in Florida, where together we are promoting membership with the local chapters and the national organizations as a way to really engage with current and potential new members to help them understand how, working together, HLAA and the chapters are really a strong organization meeting their needs at the local level as well as the national level. And we have about 26 chapters now who are involved in this Unified Membership Model. It's gone very well and has provided not only increased membership for the local chapters and HLAA, but also is bringing in new leaders and new volunteers for both the chapters and HLAA. It's taken us a little longer to implement this across the organization because of the need to get all of the logistics taken care of and all the paperwork taken care of. We're pretty confident that we have the logistical systems in place now, and as soon as our new Director of Chapter Development is brought onboard and is up to date, we'll be reaching out to other chapters to encourage you to learn more about this model and how you can participate in it and how, working together, we can better meet the needs of local chapter members, increase the vibrancy and strength of our local chapters and the national organizations, and provide better support to our chapters. So we'll talk more about that later, and we'll be talking a lot about that in June at the convention. The last thing on my update for today, and then we're going to turn this over to you, is to give you a quick update about some of the personnel changes that have occurred here at HLAA. About a month ago, we hired our new Director of Marketing and Communication. His name is David Hutchison. We are very excited to have David join us, and he's really going to be working with all of the staff and the Board and the chapters to really come up with a comprehensive strategic marketing and communication plan for HLAA that will be useful for all of us across the organization. The good news is that David is new to his hearing loss journey. He's had a hearing loss for about two years, and since he's been with us in the last three or four years, he's learned all kinds of wonderful things about HLAA and the tools and resources we provide to members and people who have a hearing loss. And he's bringing his vast experience of marketing and communication to help us develop a strategic plan with appropriate metrics that will really help all of us increase the marketing and communication efforts of the organization. Because as we all know, many people say to us, "HLAA saved my life," or "HLA gave me back my life," but I've never heard of you before. And so with David's help, we really plan to address that real significant problem for all of us. This Monday, we had a new person join our staff. His name is Kendall Brown. He's our new Web Technologies Manager, and he'll be working with all of our staff and with the chapters to make some changes with our website, keep us up to date, work with a variety of web technology strategies that we're implementing, and we're very, very excited to have him join, and he's been with us for three days. We are recruiting for the Director of Chapter Development, and we have had several very good candidates that we are talking to. We are making excellent progress in recruiting for this position, and we hope that we will be able to announce someone in that position very, very soon. And then the last position that we are recruiting for is our Encheck Coordinator, Lisa Devlin, who was in that position, has retired, and we are recruiting for that position. And this is the program that we have gotten grant funding from the RERC and GAO debt to do an expanded train-the-trainer program around hearing-assisted technology. And the program is up. We have people involved in the program, but we are looking for a person to continue building momentum on that program. So that concludes my update. I think now we are ready to turn this over to those of you on the webinar with questions. More importantly, if you have any answers to some of our questions, we're looking forward to hearing from you. Nancy, do we have any questions?
The first question comes from Noreen, and this has to do with emerging companies in the hearing aid manufacturer industry. She says, "It is important that any and all hearing aid manufacturers include a telecoil in products. It's not enough just to say that it has a telecoil. There has to be some standards for the coil itself." Meg, or Anna, would you like to comment on that?
I'm sorry, Nancy. I couldn't hear the question.
Oh, well, in terms of looking at the telecoils and that they're the minimum standard for the coils themselves, I think that's an excellent question. I will have to defer a little bit to Anna in terms of saying whether, in talking to the FCC and others, they've talked about standardization. I'm assuming that you mean, I think that one of the things that has to be considered is, are the audiologists that are recommending the telecoils following best practices in terms of how they're putting them in? Because the telecoils will only work effectively if they're in correct alignment with the induction loops that you're listening to. So they should be telling you very specifically how to use the products. If the products themselves are defective or aren't working very effectively, I actually thought that there were some standards around the telecoils. It was just how they were put in and alignment in the hearing aid in terms of how they might function, and I'm not sure if Anna has other perspectives on that.
No, I don't. And Noreen, why don't I do a little more research on that, and then we can send that answer out to you, and we can share it with others on the webinar, too.
Okay, the next question was from Vicky, who said, "You mentioned the Web Development Coordinator working with chapters. How specifically?"
One of the things that occurs a lot here is trying to keep our website up to date on all of the new information from chapters. For instance, when you have meetings, when you're changing your leadership, so that when we get a call here at the office and someone's looking for a chapter in a local area, we have the most up-to-date information on our website. And frankly, that's been a challenge sometimes. So this person will be working with our Director of Chapter Development and Barbara Kelly to make sure that all of the information that we get from chapters is as updated as possible and posted as quickly as possible to the website.
Tony from Michigan would like to know, "I would like to sign up for the Unified Membership Program. I was under the old rebate program. Do I need to wait for a national coordinator before I can sign up?"
This is Anna. Barbara Kelly and I are kind of managing this until the new Director of Chapter Development comes onboard, so why don't you send either Barbara or I an email, and we'll get you started.
Okay, very good. Ken Kluske says, "The PCAST report recommends changes. Is HLAA going to ask its members to advocate like it did with the CDC report to help implement those changes? Do we know if the, he says, FTC and FDA are receptive to the recommended changes?"
Meg, I'll start with this, and then if you want to jump in, please do. We absolutely will be engaging with our chapter members and our consumers and members of the public around strategies for implementing the recommendations from the PCAST report. In fact, last week, I had the opportunity to talk to the Academy of Doctor's Vodeology, who also are recommending and supporting the recommendations from the PCAST report. And we're hoping to work together with them and others to come up with some very strategic and measured responses and ideas for what you can do to help us make sure that the recommendations are implemented. And it will mean consumers reaching out to the FDA and to the FTC, and then just being very clear from the consumer point of view why we feel that this is going to improve access and quality to hearing healthcare, and to be sure that we are doing it in a way that makes sense and protects consumers. So that, for instance, when we're talking about an over-the-counter hearing aid, we not only want to see over-the-counter hearing aids, but we also want to see appropriate labeling, transparency. We know that education of consumers is going to be critical to the success of all of these kinds of recommendations, and we also know that these recommendations from the PCAST report will go a long way toward informing the work of the IOM study. So yes, we will be reaching out to chapters with suggestions and ideas of what you can do to help encourage the implementation of these recommendations.
I will just add to, I will echo what Anna has just shared, but also just want to add that one of the things that we want to keep very much informed about and updated on is that these, as I mentioned before, are recommendations that actually go to the President, because it's the President's Advisory Group. And so it will be potentially valuable at some point that the individuals responsible at that administrative level get feedback and input. We actually have been in touch with them on issues related to this particular We actually have been in touch with them on issues related to this particular announcement before it came out, in terms of their report. And I think once we know more specifically if there are individuals besides those at the FDA or FCC that need to be encouraged, if you will, to make some of those changes, then we will certainly let individuals know. I will also say that I think the FDA has been very hesitant to take on this issue because it feels to them, I think, sometimes like it's opening Pandora's Box. It's a concern in terms of what regulations they can put on. There are various levels of risk that the FDA looks at, and for most hearing aids that are air-conduction hearing aids, they don't go through a great review process. They've already been screened, in a sense, and approved, so that you can sort of come in under a grandfather. Now that said, we want to make sure that, as Anna stressed, that there's transparency so that the consumer is very informed when he or she purchases this information, the devices, and knows specifically what those devices are or are not able to do. And one of the concerns and one of the issues that we want to make sure is addressed is that no hearing amplification system is set where it can go too loud, where it can actually further damage an individual's hearing. So we want to make sure that those kinds of regulations are in place. Who sets those criteria is yet to be determined, because there are actually some consumer groups that are trying to come out with some criteria for regulations. And sometimes the FDA or others sort of look to those other groups to look for what the standards should be. And we may be getting input on some of the things that you might be concerned about, so we are sure to address those as well.
Okay, getting back to the telecoil question. Betty from Colorado Springs says, "What if the vendors do not include a telecoil in a hearing aid?" Either of you want to answer that one?
So this is Anna. We know that many times, hearing aids are dispensed without a T-coil in them. And, you know, that's one of the things that we often do here at the office when we're talking to consumers, is to strongly encourage them to be sure to talk to their audiologist or the hearing aid dispensers and ask for a T-coil. Now, in some states, there is a requirement of the audiologist to inform the consumer, or the hearing aid dispenser, to inform the consumer about the T-coils. And sometimes we're under the impression that that does occur, and sometimes it doesn't occur. So it's really, I think, a matter of being a very well-educated consumer and not always just rely on what your audiologist or your hearing aid dispenser is telling you, but go in knowing exactly what you need, what your communication challenges are, and then make sure that you ask for what you need.
Okay, oftentimes, the hearing aid can be retrofit with a telecoil, too. So you can, if you didn't get one at the beginning, you can always ask them to add a telecoil later.
Now, that's a great point, Nancy. Thank you.
And there's also other kinds of adaptive equipment, but that is something extra. So if you can, it's better to get them installed in your hearing aid.
Right. Okay, Joan would like to know, "How is the convention going to be different this year? Do you think that we are joining in with the IFHOH conference?" And if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and answer that.
You go, Nancy.
Fine with me.
HLA members who are used to the format of our convention will not be disappointed. It will have much the same format as previous years. However, this year, it's going to be with much of an international flavor. You'll see some workshops by presenters of other countries talking about legislation in their country, how prevalent loops are in that country, how they deal with things related to hearing loss in their country. We are still, we still have a call for papers open until December the 4th for anybody who's out there and would like to present a workshop, either in their educational track or in the chapter, state chapter development room. It is important that you get your call for papers in by December the 4th. In addition to our, what I've mentioned so far, the IFHOH, together with the EFHOH, the Europeans, and the IFHOHYP, the Young Persons Organization, will have a series of board meetings and general meetings. Mostly, you know, the board meetings will be just of those organizations. They do have the IFHOH biennial board meeting or general meeting that anybody is welcome to attend if they'd like. That's going to be on Wednesday. I'm working currently to develop a schedule at a glance so that people will be able to see all of those meetings that they're invited to attend that involve the IFHOH, EFHOH, and I think that about covers it, Joan, but if you have any other questions, let me know.
Nancy, this is Anna. The only other thing I think we should tell people about is that we are expecting over 2,000 people to attend the conference, and we are obviously expecting people from all around the world to attend. In fact, we've heard from Japan that they're planning on sending 100 people. So it's going to be a great conference. There's going to be great educational programs. I'm already seeing some of the evidence of that, as well as a great opportunity to really engage with people around the world. And so it's going to be a great time, a great city, lots of fun, and I hope everybody encourages all of their colleagues and chapter members and friends to attend.
You're here. Right. Vicki asks, "What was the selection criteria for the 26 chapters for the Unified Program? I have heard some of the criteria required, but one of the chapters, yet they didn't have the, I'm not quite sure what she's asking here, but one of the chapters didn't, yet they had the program anyway." I guess she's saying, one of the chapters didn't meet the criteria, yet they have the program anyway.
So this is Anna. I'm not exactly sure I understand your question, but let me try and answer it anyway. The first 26 chapters were people who volunteered, were part of the old rebate program, and new chapters that were being formed. And so we wanted to, obviously, start the new chapters off right away with the Unified Member Model. And then other chapter people who were aware of the program and volunteered and wanted to become part of it, obviously, we tried to work with them as quickly as possible. We really tried to go at this a bit slowly in the beginning to make sure we had the logistics figured out, because there are a lot of things that have to occur between chapters who are in close geographic proximity to each other, as well as to be sure that we're all doing this for the right reason. And the right reason for the Unified Member Model is really to promote membership, to really engage with our current members and provide value to them, as well as make sure that the return and investment of new members who are coming into HLA are getting everything they need to do. And so there are some agreements that are signed between HLA-A and the chapters. And so if anyone on the webinar wants to get involved in this program and learn more about it, send me an email or Barbara Kelly, and we will walk you through the steps.
Jerry Bergman would like to know, "What's the latest on the Consumer Technology Initiative, especially the consumer product website?"
So this is Anna. We are very excited that the initial alpha and beta testing of the product directory has gone quite well, and based upon the feedback from those two groups of testers, we have made some changes to the product directory. But with anything like this, we want to make sure that our first official launch goes well and that we've thought through everything very carefully. So we are, because you can never, you know, redo a first impression. And so we are currently coming up with some additional changes to the product directory, but also making sure that when we launch, we have an appropriate business model in place that keeps it going and supported. And so we're probably going to do a little bit more testing before the official live, formal launch. So just be with, be patient with us a little bit longer until we get a couple of these other things figured out, but because we really want you to be happy and proud of what we're doing, and we're just continuing to make a few adjustments and make sure that we have a business model in place that will support it when it's launched. So just stay tuned.
Vicki would like to know, "Will there be another Loop Convention in the U.S. soon, possibly at the same time with the HLA Convention?" Can I answer that one?
There's no plans to do another international Loop Conference in the U.S. right now. And Nancy, you'll have to help me remember, there is an international conference that has been scheduled and announced, and it is in 2016 in Germany? Is that right?
Germany, but I believe it was 2017.
So it's 2017 in Germany, but there's no plans to do an international conference in the U.S. right now.
Betty would like to know, "Have you invited the President's Council to attend?" I'm assuming she means the President's, the PCAS Council to attend the convention?
So not only have we invited the PCAS Chair to attend convention, but we have asked Dr. Castle to do a webinar next month. Again, Nancy, you'll have to help me with the date, but I think it's December 16th. And our goal is to have the Chair of the PCAS Report and the Chair of the IOM Report both present at a joint plenary conference at the convention, and then have a sort of consumer response panel to the two presentations about the report. So we're very excited that we're trying to get that planned, and hopefully that will occur, and we'll be able to announce that very quickly or very soon. But Nancy, can you give me the date of the PCAS webinar for next month?
It is Wednesday, December the 16th, from 8:00 until 9:00 p.m. Eastern Time. And more information has already been posted to the webinar schedule page, so you can see more information about what Dr. Castle is going to be talking about that night. Okay, next question. Back to telecoils, it's a popular subject tonight. What are the possibilities of getting T-coils in all PSAPs?
This is Anna. Some PSAPs already have T-coils in them, and we've had some conversations with the manufacturers about the importance of T-coils, so that is something that we will continue to promote. I don't believe that we will ever see all PSAPs or all over-the-counter hearing aids have T-coils.
Okay, at this point, I think I've covered all of the questions that have been posted in the chat, and if anybody else has another question, that would be great. We still have some time left. What is PSAPs?
Oh, the PSAP is a personal sound amplifying system or...
Product.
So it's something that is not considered within the regulations for FDA. The difference between what's considered a hearing aid is that a hearing aid specifically says it's for persons who have difficulty with hearing. A PSAP basically advertises itself as something that anybody can use. They do not try to say that it's for persons with hearing loss. Now, you can say that's an awfully fine line, and that's one of the reasons that there've been ongoing discussions about what that really means, but they don't fall under the same regulations that a hearing aid does. And anybody, if Nancy or Anna want to add to that, please do.
No, I think that PSAPs is a terrible term and a terrible name, and very hard to understand. And so one of the things that we've been talking about here is just being clear that we believe that there is a place and a purpose of over-the-counter hearing aids, and a place and a purpose for hearing aids that are prescribed by an audiologist or a hearing aid dispenser. And the idea is to expand options for people so that if you have a mild and moderate hearing loss, there are ways that you can begin your journey in managing your hearing loss with a device that doesn't require you to have, you know, the out-of-pocket expenses that some hearing aids require, and allows you, more options, and allows audiologists and hearing aid dispensers to have more tools and options for them to use when they're helping people with their hearing loss. So I think there's a lot of change going on right now in the industry. There's a lot of opportunities right now for consumers and some challenges. And one of the things that we have said to the PCAS group, we've said to IOM, and we've said to audiologists, hearing aid dispensers, and the hearing aid industry, is now is the time for all of us to work closely together to really educate people about what they should be thinking about when they go to come up with options and solutions to manage their hearing loss, and what's the difference between an over-the-counter hearing aid and something else, and how do you use those, and how do they get labeled, and how do they get packaged, and what are the regulations that really ensure that we understand what we're buying and what we're using for different purposes? And then lastly, the most important thing, I think we alluded to earlier in the call, is many times, we are so focused on talking about the technology, whether it's a hearing aid or a PSAP, that we really forget that we really have to begin with where the patient is or where the consumer is, and do a proper needs assessment, and really work with that person to find out what are their needs and what are the possible solutions and options for them, and not jump immediately to the technology solution, because technology isn't always the only solution, and there may be, as we all know, multiple technology products or services that they may need. So let's start with the person first. Let's do a proper needs assessment, and then let's provide as many options as possible to that individual to help them live most successfully as they can with their hearing loss.
We do know, this is Meg, and I just want to emphasize there, too, that we do know that technically, the best practice is for audiologists is to include that kind of an assessment. When you go in to see someone, they should be finding out much more carefully where you have problems hearing, what your hearing needs actually are, where you most want to hear, and the types of things you want to hear, so that the audiologist can not only identify what type of loss you have, but should be able to consider what's the best strategy to address your specific issue, and give you, hopefully, more than just, say, a hearing aid, which may be one alternative. But as Anna was stressing, usually, we need more than just a hearing aid, because hearing aids are only useful in very specific situations. They're not useful in some of the situations that many of us wish to hear. So it is really important to stress to the audiologist what you need to hear, where you have the most problems, and the kinds of things that might be most assistive in terms of dealing with your hearing loss, so that you can stay engaged as much as you wish.
Mary Clark would like to know, "Will there be more focus on chapter and state development and training once a new person is onboard? Most of what I've heard tonight is related to the advocacy arm of HLA-A."
Thanks, Mary, for that question. The answer to that is yes. Um, one of the things that we'd like to know, um, better from the chapters and the state organizations is what are your needs? And how can we work better to, to meet those needs? And David, our new marketing and communications person, one of the first things he said is, we need to do a survey out to the chapters to figure out how we're meeting their needs, what are some of the gaps and opportunities for us to do a better job at, at meeting the needs of chapters. And so I think that you can count on a joint effort between Barbara and I, and David, and the new chapter person, to not only survey, uh, chapters and state organizations, but, um, come up with some strategies for not only training, but just better communication. Um, we oftentimes say here in the office, we have 10 ways that we, um, communicate and listen to what's going on at the chap, with the chapters. And then oftentimes, we continue to hear that people aren't getting any information from HLA. So we're looking for ways to, uh, improve that, improve that process, and come up with programs that really do better meet the needs of chapters.
Um, also, just along those lines, if anybody, um, is in the webinar tonight that would like to present a, a webinar to state and chapter leaders, by all means, let me know. I'm more than happy to work with you to, to set something like that up. Um, Nancy Brady would like to know, what about SmartLinks? Will they be covered like hearing aids? My insurance would not pay for the hearing assistants that work with my hearing aids.
Uh, one of the recommendations that we made to PCAST when we met with them is to try to get the IRS and federal regular, uh, IRS and others to provide tax incentives and credits for assistive listening devices, and, um, not only to get Medicare and third-party peers to pay for hearing aids, but also, um, oral rehabilitation. I do not see in the near future, and realistically, um, your reimbursement for some of these other kinds of hearing assistive technologies yet. But I do think that the more we are educating people about the value of those technologies and devices, and how they really do help people to stay in the workplace longer, to better engage in the community, and do all of those things that we know they do, the better chance we are to, uh, getting some of these things done. But I don't think it's going to be anytime soon.
Uh, Jerry Bergman would like to know, is there any progress toward a government requirement that all video on the internet must be captioned?
Okay. Yes, there are, there is progress being made. In fact, some of it is regulatory in nature, but a lot of it is also voluntary. We had a very interesting call with, um, Yahoo a couple of weeks ago, where they're doing a lot more, uh, captioning with not only their videos, their TV trail, their, um, movie trailers, and they're really seeing it as frankly, uh, having a positive impact on their bottom line. So I think many times, as consumers, we can make faster progress by increasing the demands we make on the industry than always going through a legislative or regulatory process.
Betty asked, uh, when we got our hearing aids, we were so impressed with the new sounds that we didn't know to ask all these questions. Shouldn't the audiologist be required to tell us about them, and how will that be done across the country? Um, while you answer that, I'm going to find something on our website to link to right there that will help, help others in that situation.
I, this is, this is Meg, and I certainly want to have Anna or Nancy chime in on this, but there are state-level actions on this. One of the issues that is true about audiology and some of the hearing dispensers, certainly, is that hearing dispensers specifically are state-licensed. And so I think some of the regulations that influence their practice are at a state level. And I don't believe that level of practice is mandated by the, uh, licensing activities. Uh, those are more best practices that are encouraged by all the professional organizations. So if you read what best practices include, um, say, the American Academy of Audiology, they will specifically include things like, you know, real ear measurements, and doing the assessments and other things. But those are, uh, best practices, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they're legislated so that the individual is mandated to follow those activities. And I don't know, Anna, if you want to, uh, add to that.
Um, so I, I think there are two things going on here. One, um, as a real, it's really important to go in as an educated consumer. And in conversations I've had with audiologists, many times, they said they did tell the patient these things, but there's so many things that are being told to the patient or to the consumer that you get overwhelmed, and you don't always necessarily hear, um, as well as you can or should, when, when they're giving you this information. And obviously, um, there's just so much to absorb when you're getting this information, that even if the audiologist tells you some of these things, people don't retain it. And then we also know that audiologists don't do a very good job, some don't do a very good job of explaining all of these things. And that's one of the reasons why HLA has sort of a checklist that we developed, is on our website, which I bet is what Nancy's looking for, that really kind of gives you a cheat sheet that you can use when you're in the office to make sure that you are asking the appropriate questions and getting appropriate answers from, uh, your hearing help here professional.
I did post the link to that in the, um, in the chat box, so, um, people can find that. It's so helpful. It has all the things on there that you need to ask, that you have good information about what to purchase and so forth. Um, Dana had asked or commented that she would like to see training modules on legal rights for all members, um, as well as other topics, as, um, in the webinars. And again, I invite anybody who would like to present on those topics. Um, I'm always looking for webinar presenters, and, um, if anybody would like to present about legal rights for people with hearing loss, or any other topic, um, that's within your realm of expertise, let me know. You can send me an email at nmaclean@hearingloss.org. I'll put that in the chat box, too. Um, let's see. Mary, um, Mary Clark said she, she gets the checklist by the hundreds and hands them out, um, and we do, too, whenever we exhibit. There, it's a great document. Um, Vicky says, I wish audiologists would mention HLLA so these people can find help from members. So do we, Vicky. Um, are the webinars only open to members, or would a training module on becoming an informed consumer? Um, no, anybody can come into the webinars, as long as you just go to that schedule page and click on the link. Um, and then anybody can go ahead and watch the replay, too. So we, uh, we don't want to limit the webinars just to members. We'd like everybody to join in. Uh, okay, we're nearing the end here. Um, Teresita would like to know if, if there's a transcript available. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning, the, the webinar has been recorded, and, um, we will post it on our website. Uh, seeing that this is a, a short week for me and on vacation next week, I'll, I'll work on it, but I, I can't promise when it's going to be posted. Um, but I will try as, um, as soon as I can to get it up there. I know that this is a great resource for chapter meetings to, to replay, so that, um, chapters can be engaged with what's going on here at the national office and, um, have a discussion, so, uh, let's see.
Uh, Nancy, this is Anna. Um, I would like to do a quick poll, if we have just a moment to do that.
Okay.
Um, for those of you who are looking at the left-hand side of the screen, there's a little checkbox there. Uh, there's a happy face, a raised hand, and a little checkbox. So I'd like to ask you a question, it's a yes and no, um, question. And the question is, did you, my comment is, did you find this kind of town hall, uh, format helpful? And would you like to see HLA continue to do these, um, you know, occasionally during the course of the year? Uh, would you respond yes or no? Nancy, um, if they say yes, I, oh, it was getting some responses, so I guess my instructions were clear.
Uh, it looks like, uh, this is a, a popular format and something that we should do more frequently, absolutely.
Excellent. Good news.
There, there's a question about strategic intent.
I think we're going to be, I'm not sure if that's going to be out in the newest magazine, or if, uh, but yes, it will be distributed. So we will be making the strategic statement of strategic intent available. It probably will be on our website, uh, in the not-too-distant future. Would that be correct, Anna?
Uh, yes, it'll be posted on the website. We will be talking about it in TWIB, and I hope those of you who know about TWIB, that's This Week in Bethesda, as well as all of the other, um, communication vehicles that we have, like, uh, HLA eNews. And, uh, we'll be posting it to the chapter leaders, uh, leaders' listeners. So yeah, we'll be getting that out to folks, um, very quickly.
Okay. It, this looks like a popular format. We'll schedule this again. Um, but for now, we are out of time, and I want to be respectful of our, uh, car provider, Cindy Thompson. Thank you again, Cindy, very much for providing captioning this evening. And thank you to Anna and Meg for, uh, getting this discussion going with, uh, chapter members and, um, HLA members across the country. This has been a really good discussion, and I appreciate your time.
And thank you, Nancy.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Nancy.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Enjoy your conference, Meg.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, everybody.